Recording in progress.
Okay, I know this is school committee's meeting, so I'm sure you all call it to order and here comes Beth. So, great.
We're just waiting for our chair who's in the waiting room, so she'll be here now.
Okay, I just, she just popped up. Hold on.
I think it's posted as a joint meeting, Michelle, so you can call us to order too.
Also, Michelle, looks like Bill McGonigal is in the gallery.
Here he comes.
Okay.
Anybody else we're expecting?
No, we're good.
All right.
I'm just looking at the list of names quickly to see.
So I know some of us, Karen and Michelle, we had a hard stop like around 2:30.
Mine's even earlier. I'm actually in a conference room in another state, so as soon as we can get through our business, or I may need to leave closer to the top of the hour, so.
Then let's go.
Is Michelle?
I'll call school committee to order.
Yeah.
At 1:33 on September 5th, 2024, for a joint meeting of the school committee and select board on with a single agenda item of consideration of approval of the Mystic HVAC project.
And I'll call the select board meeting to order as well with the same agenda as articulated by the school committee chair. So Karen, would you like us to jump in? Would you like to set the table?
Um, well, I believe you were going to open up conversation along with Beth, so.
Yes. Okay, so thanks, everybody for jumping on. I know it was a bit of a.
So we had a few weeks back where we are looking for school committee approval to proceed.
Michelle, I'm just going to say, interject and say, it's a little hard to hear you. You're fading in and out.
Ah, sorry, could be the.
Yeah, I'm having, I'm having the same problem, Michelle.
Okay.
You're good now.
Our, our goal today is to both get an update on Mystic School heat and to get from the school committee some agreement to proceed since it's a school committee building at the Mystic School. Our, the engineer who's working on the plans for the heating upgrades, Scott Enriquez is here, our facilities manager, Pete Lawson is here. I'll turn it over to Beth Rudolph if there's more table setting, but I think our hope is to get a sense of school committee approval to proceed because we're looking to take a vote and release an RFP using ARPA funds. So we're on a timeline to try to get this work out to bid, but I'm going to turn it over to Beth and then maybe we'll then hear from Scott, but go ahead, Beth.
Thanks, Michelle. Can everybody hear me? Okay, having trouble with my headphones, so I apologize. So yeah, as Michelle said, we, Weston Sampson is moving forward with the project design at this point, and we are on track, and I'll let Scott correct me if I'm wrong, but have bid documents ready by early to mid-October. And so we were looking for a definitive decision by our select board on Monday night to move forward with the bidding of the, of the project with the intention that we would be, you know, using ARPA funds before the end of the year to award the contract. So we really need a decision by the board on Monday night, on the 9th, to move this forward, to get those bid documents finalized in time for that mid, early to mid-October bid deadline. And I know one of the things, you know, was we had a series of questions that we got from the school committee, I guess, back in June that we had put together some responses to in July, and so really just getting everybody together to talk through next steps and schedule prior to bidding the project.
And just to clarify, regardless of what school committee decides today, then on Monday at select board's meeting, it's really up to select board to make a decision on what project and which, or what project you're moving forward with?
So the board has set aside a kind of a pool of money, about $1.3 million for the Winchester High School gym floor project and around $900,000 for the Mystic Heat project. That, that money has not been committed in any way, and we need to have all of our ARPA funding committed by the end of this calendar year. And so obviously, the intention, as we've been talking about for the past few months, is to allocate, you know, that $900,000. At least there may be a little bit of additional money that we have available towards the Mystic Heat project.
Okay.
So can I ask a couple of questions? Because it may help, I'm not sure who's going to introduce it, or if Scott's going to kick it off.
Yeah, I was.
In the realm of, in the realm of table setting, Scott was kind enough to meet with us. We had, we had a Zoom meeting with Scott, a few members of management, Frank and Karen. After your, after the select board meeting on June 3rd, Michelle Pryor, Scott reviewed some of that with us. And some of the questions at the time were, you know, knowing you guys had sort of encumbered, let's say, 900,000 of ARPA. What came back conceptually was more, and maybe it was on the order of 960, 980, something like that. There were some options in there to, you know, upgrade to a pad-mounted transformer for future flexibility and so forth. What struck us at the time was the, the, given that the goals were to isolate what is now steam piping, it's 101 years old. We're talking about in the original Mystic, because that's the piping that's really giving DPW such fits. That conceptual plan did that and supplemented it with some ductless split system heat pumps for heating and cooling. But in addition, it also picked up some rooms that are, that were actually built in the addition in 1950. So there were questions about how necessary is that? Because that obviously adds to scope and cost and having to move people out of those spaces. And there is hazardous material abatement. But in particular, that was a question I know I had in June because at that time, the conceptual work from Weston and Sampson was very clear about what was excluded. So really, none of the spaces, what we say at the top of the building, at the back of the hill, these are spaces that have really been chronically cold. Those were excluded from the work. So we had that conversation. Scott, who am I glad with us today, you know, expressed interest in availability to go look at the building, work with Pete and try to understand what's going on. And I believe that what the school committee approved earlier in the summer was to, well, I think we voted to support moving this project into design development, and we were respectfully asking the select board to let Scott and his team take a look at those upper level spaces. Because I think that was really the community, one of the community expectations, Michelle, was these are the spaces that are just really uncomfortable for kids and for staff. So we just wanted to be sure we were looking at the whole picture. And I gather that is something Weston and Sampson has been doing, so that's something I'm especially interested in understanding. So if you guys are asking us if we approve the project, I think it's important for the school committee to understand what it is we're approving, if that makes sense.
And to that end, Chris, maybe let's turn it over then to Scott and see what, what we've learned with he and Pete and working through the building, if that makes sense.
Sounds great.
Thanks. Go ahead.
All right. Well, thank you. Can I share my screen?
Please, I don't know if there's permission.
A screen, I should say, hold on. Am I sharing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So thank you, everyone, for the introductions and such. I can give you a brief overview of, of our understanding of where we're at. We did send a team of electrical and mechanical engineers into the building. We have looked at loads, we've selected equipment for the quote-unquote lower half of the building, and we are, as you can see, starting to produce drawings. Please, if there's any unique things happening on these drawings that you wouldn't normally see, this is pretty much just like a print set, right? This isn't something that was meant originally to present to peoples, but I did want to have it as a, an option that you folks could see where we're going with this. The scope of work, as we understand it, is we are still looking at a VRF system for the lower half of the building. We're still planning to isolate the old steam pipes via valving. It looks like we're not going to have to add any valving to the project to do that. The existing valving is sufficient. We are going to need a new transformer to supply this additional electric load, because the existing pole-mounted transformer, I believe, is limited to 30 kVA, and the additional electric load of these heat pumps will exceed that. We do have an option or an add alternate in the project to upgrade the existing 400 amp service to an 800 amp service. So that in the future, if we decided to, or if it was required to add the upper half of the building to the VRF system, the electrical service would be sufficient to do that. And at that point, we would also upgrade the transformer from approximately 400 amp transformer to an 800 amp transformer. And that would have to be pad-mounted, and I will show you some concepts of what we think that might be going forward. With respect to the upper portion of the building, based on the conversations we had had previously, we are expecting to spend some time in there when the weather gets a little bit colder so that we can experience some of the problems that you're having right now with, with heating in those spaces. So we do have scope and budget to investigate the heating problems in the upper section of the building, but we are going to be looking for some colder weather before we are able to execute that work. With respect to hazardous materials, we are, we, based on our additional site work, as you can see here, most, not almost, all of the heat pumps are going to be wall-mounted because the ceilings are asbestos. We have vetted these locations for asbestos, and to the best of our knowledge, they're all clean. And then you can see also, we've positioned two of the condenser units, one here and one here. Those locations are preliminary. I think there's some conversations we need to have with respect to those locations as well as the potential locations for the new transformer. We have not vetted whether our piping cores are yet going to be needing asbestos remediation or not. That's probably one of the next steps in the process, and we have not located. So part of the electrical scope is to run a new panel off of the existing 400 amp main to service this equipment, and we have not located that panel yet. So that's one of the other things that's left in, in the, you know, the kind of early on stages of the project. With respect to schedule, we are expecting to have a, what we call a 95% set of plans and specifications approximately September 19th. Please give me a little wiggle room on that. And at that point, we would be going through our own internal QA QC process as well as starting coordination with town to put together front-end documents, talk about actual bid dates, and, you know, pick up whatever other administrative issues that might be required to make sure that the package is both technically correct and administratively suitable for town to bid. And as of right now, our expectation is that we would have bid-ready documents by approximately 10:10 of this year. I could give you, you could take a quick, quick look at some of the other plans we have. It's, it's very similar. You're not going to really get a whole lot out of this, but I just did want to, want you to see. Again, this is the lower half of the building. Some demo work. We are getting rid of the existing split system cooling units that are currently in these areas. The new units will take, take the place of those. If you want, we could probably set them aside if you thought you might want to put them somewhere else, although we can talk about that another time. That's not really critical right now. So that's kind of where we're at.
Could you just clarify? You had said that you will need colder weather to continue to examine the upper, the upper floors, and is the process that you're talking about with the 95% plans that will come back by September 19th, does that include? That doesn't seem like that would include looking at the second floor, because it doesn't seem like it would be that much colder in two weeks from now. So I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I'd agree with that thought process. I'm hoping it's not that much colder in two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we really do need some cold weather to, to get a full understanding of, of what we think may or may not be happening in that area. The plan right now is if we do identify anything, any scope of work that would need to be executed, we would have to add that to the project as an addendum of some sort.
As in additional cost?
Oh, it certainly would be an additional cost if there was work to that, yes. Right now, honestly, we're thinking it's probably like controls or some sort of simple problem, but until we have an opportunity to see it actually happen and experience and understand what, what people are trying to describe to us, we'd really like to, you know, take a firsthand look at it. You have plenty of steam.
As her hand up.
Thanks, Karen. I just wanted to kind of take a step back and, like, big-picture-wise, the, the reason that the scope was designed in the way it was originally designed was to really focus on there is, those areas of the building where we were most concerned about a failure of the steam heat system. And so that's how the project scope kind of evolved. And so understanding that there's concerns about those additional annex spaces, which, as you guys know from our meeting a couple of weeks ago, that we, we are moving forward with a grant to help to improve the windows in that area, which obviously will do a lot, go a long way to improve, you know, the feeling in those, in those rooms, but those areas were not part of the areas that were originally prioritized for, you know, to be, have the system replaced as part of a steam heat, sort of. The system being able to be maintained in a state of good repair and not have some sort of catastrophic failure. So that's really what guided the overall original design for the project. Scott, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that's accurate. We were, we were heavily focused on the older portion of the building because it was reported as being the most problematic and also the least potentially resilient.
I see the school committee hands leaping up. So, Tom, Mr. Hopcroft.
Thank you, I'm chair. Yeah, I just wanted to, to jump in on that point to, as a point of information, I guess, maybe for, for folks that, you know, on the school committee side in particular, we've been hearing from residents and, you know, PPW and select board and otherwise about those rooms up back. We had four people in our last meeting, public comment in support of the windows, albeit, which will help with that, so the grant come through. But, you know, there was, you know, one person talking about sending her kid with two winter coats, one to wear outside if it gets wet, a second one to wear inside. Yeah, Nick talks about coming in at 40 and 50 degree weather and his, you know, staff morale and people being bundled up and stuff. And, and so I know we're talking here about a different issue, which is a potential catastrophic failure in the future and about the maintenance that's accelerating on these pipes, but just, you know, what we've been hearing from the community. So there's two, I, I get, these are two very separate problems that we want to address, but yeah, to the extent we can, if it's a controls issue, that would be fantastic if it's something small that, that can address that. Hopefully, the grant comes through on the windows. That'll help a little bit. I know there's some talk about supplemental heat up there, but, but just, I know it's not this particular vote here, but in the context of this building, the squeaky wheel that we've been hearing about literally since January has been those back rooms up there. So, you know, it's a, anyway, I just wanted to put that out there and, and we would love to, maybe if we have to come into the meeting or our next meeting, you know, I'd love to see if there's some, you know, we'll, we'll hear back, I guess, from Scott and his team soon, but yeah, I'm particularly concerned about the problem we have right now, as well as the one that, the cliff that we're hanging over. Yeah, that's coming up. So that was the point I was going to make on that point as well. Let's stand there for now.
Chris?
Um, I, I've already, since I've spoken once, like, Michelle just raised her hand. I'm happy to yield to Ms. Bergstrom for a moment if she's, she'd like.
That's okay, Chris. Go ahead, Al.
So I, I, I guess a couple of things I want to circle back on. And, and to be really clear, you know, Scott and the team from Weston and Sampson are doing, I think, exactly what they've been asked or told to do. To build on Tom's point though, Beth, I mean, I've gone back and watched that meeting again from January. I'm not sure it was clear to me, I'm not sure how clear we were to the public, that the scope of the project had pivoted to, no, pivot's the wrong word, because this is an important element of it. I'm not sure it's been really clear that it was focused primarily on this ancient steam piping. And just to be clear, the addition was built in 1950. So the quote newer piping is 74 years old, and that's not great either. So very well aware of that. I, I think Scott has done really a great job explaining how isolating 1923 steam piping goes a long way towards addressing the serviceability, the resiliency of the system. So I don't think there's really any question about that. But I agree with Tom. We, I mean, not only did we hear from community members, the former select board chair was emailing large groups of people with photographs of thermostats in spaces at the top on the hill that were 48 degrees. And so as I sit here right now, I'm feeling like there is a strong community expectation, understanding, belief, et cetera, that we are addressing that. Even if that, so that right now is sort of not something that Weston and Sampson has fully understood or scoped, and that is what it is. They weren't originally asked to do that. My concern is, though, as we're going into the winter, hopefully, that won't become a tremendous problem, because it will need to be addressed somehow. I actually come back, though, Beth, to, and Michelle Pryor, I come back to the issue of scope and cost, because as I understand it, you guys encumbered 900,000 in ARPA for it. And what Weston and Sampson came back with on June 3rd was a little more. I'm not sure it has all the contingencies in it, certainly in the ballpark. But that doesn't include what might be done in these upper level spaces. So then I think about, well, it's not 900, it's 900 plus. Is it a million? Is it a million one? Is it a million two? And I know, you know, Roger McPeak is going to be talking with the board on the 9th about our list of capital priorities, and I understood maybe there'd be some discussion about free cash. I was not aware that the board was thinking about $1.3 million in ARPA money to go towards the high school concrete. I will not look a gift worth in the mouth, and we're working really hard to see if maybe we can get the 1.2 down, but.
If I said concrete floor, it should be the high school gym floor was the 1.3 million.
Oh, I think I heard.
Pick up and say, I believe you said the gym floor. Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and we, we have a, we have a budget problem there too, right, Beth? So we're trying to work through that as well. Like, and, you know, there's library window needs, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess I'm, I'm interested in, because the ARPA dollars could go to many different projects with significant need. Are we being really clear-minded about what this might cost? And do we have a real sense about where that money is going to come from? Because even if the Weston and Sampson team comes back, call it phase two, with some recommendations for that upper level space, which will have to be later, even for the work that Scott has shared with us today, you know, it seems like that's going to come in over 900, although some things have changed. I know in the concept, Scott, you had ceiling cassettes. I mean, I'm actually glad to see wall-mounted. Seems pretty reasonable. I, I, I would, I'm just interested in figuring out, like, what do we need to do versus, like, what's the need to have versus the nice to have? And so I guess my last question would just be, Scott, have you, have you had a chance to think more about what we had talked about in late June? There are some spaces in that building that faces Main Street, you were just sharing on your screen a few minutes ago, that were actually a part of the 1950 addition. So they're not original to 1923. So if the focus is to isolate the 1923 piping, is there a reason why we're still isolating piping from 1950? Because if we don't really have to do that, why not take that out of the scope? And then the dollars that would go towards that might be reserved, redirected towards dealing with some of our chronically cold spaces up on the hill. That's really a question for Scott, I think, just because we have, we, there, there are some spaces you just shared with us, Scott, that were, the whole top end of the building that faces Main Street was built in 1950.
So what portion of the building are we talking about?
If you move your cursor to your left, no, you bring it right back where it was, now just come up a little bit. Come up, okay, that door right there, see that double door to your left? That little, your left, that double door in the exterior wall that goes out to Main Street, that was the door to the original building. Come up a little bit more on your screen. There's kind of right there, just, just you cross that wall, that, that space you're in right there. That space was built in 1950. That's a two-story space with the roof extension.
Right.
You did an amazing job, because it looks all original, but.
Fooled me.
Yeah, that's, that's 1950 space. That's not 1923.
So I can tell you that the steam piping that feeds that area is part of the, the old piping. And if I isolate the rest of this portion, I believe this section's going to be isolated as well, but I, I was not, like I said, you fooled me. I didn't realize that that was 1950's vintage building, to be honest with you.
I mean, it's, it's obviously so adjacent to the boiler room anyway, that this may be, if, you know, a, a great example of low-hanging fruit. I mean, just given all the work that needs to be done, and if, and if that's sort of the rationale, I get it, but it's, it's a significant amount of square footage.
It kind of is, but I mean, for the overall, I mean, we've got what? On my list of.
Four slots there?
And, 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 you know, and I'm thinking about the impact on programming and moving people out of the space, et cetera, et cetera, which is, you know, that, that's, that's rec space up above, to be clear. So that's Nick and his, his folks on the second floor. But that space on the first floor that you're showing, that's actually a tenant, that, that's, that's somebody we have a lease with, with the school committee.
Right, okay. Yeah, so it looks like you have eight fan coils out of, I don't know what, what, 30 or so? It's, I'm right now. I've got a list somewhere of all the fan coils. It's actually, maybe, I don't think it's showing up on it. We don't have a schedule yet, so I can't just pull it off the schedule. I mean, it certainly is cost, but you know, I'm not sure. I, we'd have to go back and I got the impression from my guys that this whole section was fed by the same steam pipe. We were going to be isolating one or two of these, but I can verify that. I wasn't the person who crawled around on the pipes.
What's that?
I wasn't the actual person who crawled around these pipes.
Yeah.
So I'll have to get a confirmation on that, but I'm guessing that.
It sounds like that's another area to look at or another potential opportunity to look at. So, but maybe we can ask for Michelle's question?
Thanks, Karen. My, my questions may not be quite as technical as Mr. Nixon's. A while ago, John and Pete and Michelle Pryor and Nick and Tom and I took a tour of this space the last time that we had brought this up before we were asked to agree to a scope with Weston and Sampson. And my understanding and the understanding that our committee made at the time was similar to Mr. Nixon and Mr. Hopcroft. It was about the, the chronically. It was about the the chronically cold spaces and that if we were going to. Make a short term plan to support the Mystic Building, that it was those spaces that we were going to be identifying first. Not working around the old steam system that was there. And so I'm just, I I feel like this scope has expanded over what we had initially. I'm discussed and agreed to with the select board and with Town Hall, which I completely appreciate that the. Building does need some love and care, but I I had thought that because the ARPA was short money and. And we had an immediate problem there, that that was the area we were going to be addressing first. So I'm kind of surprised to see. The scope go beyond that, particularly into the lower level spaces with the tenant. Because my understanding is those areas have been chronically warm already from the steam heat, not something that is cool. So I would be interested why we would be addressing an area that's already chronically warm from the steam system that we have in place. Rather than the areas that are chronically cold. Because it strikes me that this committee and EFPDC also agreed to a master plan. Which would include the Mystic Building, that's probably about ten months out. And it might be a really. Uh, policy wise, a really good idea to wait for that master plan before we decide to do something with the steam heat for the. Whole building or something that expands the scope of that. So that we can understand where Mystic is going to be in five or ten years and what its best use might be. So those are my questions, kind of, I guess, for my own committee and for Town Hall is when did the scope expand beyond the chronically cold spaces? And for my committee, how do you feel about the Mystic Building and it being part of the master plan and the scope expanding beyond that?
Reframe one of your questions, just because it didn't it it expand so much as it moved. Because it's it's no longer cold spaces.
That's true. They're not even doing the cold spaces, correct, Mr. Hopcroft? But it is a larger area to do than that. So I was thinking that kind of expand. Thank you.
Yes, I think even going back into the June, June meetings that we had had with Scott and then also at school committee. June twentieth, we had talked about the scope had had expanded. Into the lower level. Steam piping. But Beth, maybe you can elucidate on that.
Yeah, so and I would just invite Pete Lawson to help out because he obviously knows this building better than any of us, but. So back when this project started, you know, we really identified this as an issue last fall and into December when we had a series of. Steam heat leaks throughout the building that required emergency. You know, an emergency asbestos remediation in an occupied space to repair those those steam heat leaks. It's it seems like the building kind of got to a tipping point where last year we saw an acceleration of those of those leaks. Pete had already been working with a firm to look at ways which we could, you know, basically move this building. Replace the existing heating system with a new system. And so Pete had an initial cost estimate from them, which was what those conversations that we had in June was more based on. And then we issued an RFP, you know, we got the initial funding from the board for ARPA money. We we just issued an RFP. We had several firms that were interviewed and it became very clear during those interviews that. The cost estimate that we had originally for basically a full replacement of the heat system in the building were off by orders of magnitude. And so we were really trying to figure out what we can do. This is obviously a critical piece of infrastructure for the town. It provides preschool, it provides after school care for multiple families through multiple programs. It houses our recreation department. And so there was a series of conversations where. You know, we looked at prioritizing how we can keep this building up and running and and not have some sort of critical failure. Where we have to either have the space unoccupied for a series of days, weeks or months, or we have to spend a lot of money on a temporary basis to bring heat into the building. And so. You know, I think. The, as I mentioned, kind of the prioritizing of those that steam heat system, which is, you know, a hundred years old at this point. And although it wasn't like, let's, let's not do anything with those cold buildings, those cold rooms that obviously was something that everybody is interested in doing, but. The highest priority very quickly became like, what do we do to keep this building up and running and deliver heat to as much of the building as we can? So that we don't have a critical failure, which I think and and we have this. We we sort of mentally earmarked nine hundred. We haven't incurred any monies, but we've mentally earmarked nine hundred thousand dollars. What can we do within the range? We have a little bit of extra money that, you know, we haven't allocated ARPA money, so. We've kind of been sitting on that if we need it. And Scott, I assume you'll have an updated cost estimate, but. Pete, I don't know if you want to add anything to that in terms of what you've seen over the past year, few years with with necessary repairs in the building.
Well, I again, I think you hit everything right where it started was that we had. Some preliminary numbers and we were looking for a real fix for the building, but. The six million dollar roughly price tag was was untenable, so. The idea of what we were doing was to. Take this core area as much as we could with the number that we were being presented with of available nine hundred thousand dollars. And do the best for the building we could, understanding that there are two problems here. One is comfort. The other is catastrophic failure, leaking steam pipes with asbestos on it. So. The decision was really guided by where we were having the most problems with those. Those areas and so with the money that we were talking about, we decided to grab. The core of the building and try to isolate out that amount of steam piping. So that then we were dealing with a a smaller area that we had to support with maintenance and chase and. Figure what was going on because we're also eliminating a lot of the problems that could be likely contributing to why. We're not having success in those areas outside of the fact that, you know, the windows are terrible and other things like that. So. I, you know, the fact that it's warm downstairs is because it's sitting on poorly managed steam operations, so. Isolating that off, you know, and eliminating the concern for. Hundred year old and even seventy five year old piping from failing. Was the was the priority. And then we we put back in this electrified heat source. Again, this was to the biggest bang for the buck, minimize the. Concern of a release and and major. Damage and and then also having to deal with relocating. Both a tenant and the recreation department. If we did have a major failure in the system. We would at least have that core building area. So and in that, you know, I I know that there are many ways that. This will help us with the upstairs. We have discussed this several times and I had always brought up that we were in plan, looking at things like windows and supplemental heat. This, this, this building needs help. And if we're gonna, if we don't have a place for these other. Other groups, we need to start doing something. And, you know, obviously, it's, we don't have six million dollars right at hand, so. This will buy us a few more years to work our way through it and give it a life and then allow the master plan to. Guide what's going to happen to the building. So. And the the piping is is deteriorated and it's not something you can visually see because it's wrapped in asbestos. And most of the failures are internal in the threads of the piping. So. That was the the drive for this. To do it right is a lot more money. This buys us time.
I'm sorry to jump in. I'm going to need to leave to go rejoin my other meeting, so I'm going to quietly drop. And Karen, I can circle back with you after the fact, but bye, everybody. Thank you, Pete and everybody else for being here today.
Thank you.
John Fallon in charge of this select board meeting then? Turn your mic on, John.
Passing the hat along. Tom, I don't, if you don't mind, Chris had something he wanted to just ask quickly.
I just want to offer. Because the master plan had come up and and Beth, you on a couple of occasions, you know, have talked about how that ARPA money. It'll go poof, you know, if it's not committed by, you know, the end of December. You guys have talked about library windows or many other projects. Sure, I'm I'm sure there's some there on Pete's list. So. It seems to me that if Weston and Sampson really needs to get into the top of this building in the winter to kind of get a handle on what's going on, then that's just what has to happen. And I doesn't seem to me that that's going to happen in a way where you could get a scope of work defined and understood and funded with ARPA. Because you've you've got to commit the money by the end of December and then, you know, you got to spend it all. The following year or what have you. So it may be that whatever we have to do up there needs another funding source. And I'm not expert on that, but if that's the case, that's the case. I think isolating this nineteen twenty three steam piping is a really smart thing to do to address the resiliency. Of the system. But the point that I would make is that. I'm quite confident ten years from now, the Winchester Public Library is still going to be standing there. Me personally, I don't know how confident I am that Mystic is going to be there ten years from now. With respect to the master plan, UMass Donahue is coming on board with us. We're feeding them information starting in October. For the enrollment demographic work, we're expecting a report in December. We hope to have the architectural master planner on board by November. We'll be feeding them that information, excuse me, maybe on board by October. And we'll get an updated master plan at some point in the spring before the window closes for the core replacement projects for the MSBA. So that's kind of our timeline. We think we might get a final master plan like in February, but we're not going to get it in December. And Mystic will absolutely be something that we want to look at. And just so. People, so people can visualize this for those who are sort of, you know, they need a picture. This is Mystic in the spring of nineteen forty nine, all the beautiful landscaping. But there there's the wing, Scott, that, you know, we have today on the left, that's just not there today. We see this door. Kind of it's in the middle of the of the elevation today that faces Main Street. And in nineteen forty nine, there was nothing there. So they did a great job making it look like, you know, it was part of the original. I wanted to share that again, only because I think of Mystic, not sure how long for this world Mystic will be. And ARPA dollars are precious, even if ARPA dollars not spent on Mystic go to something that's actually not a school. Project, John and Antia and Bill and whomever else is here from the select board, like those dollars are precious and we have a great community need for them. So. Unless there's some really compelling reason why we need to be isolating nineteen fifty piping in that newer wing. I wonder if we can seriously think about just not doing that because that's going to reduce the scope of the project. There's there's less imposition on Nick and his team upstairs. There's less imposition on Kids Corner. And then you have frankly, just more ARPA dollars left over to put towards whatever you want to put them towards, even if it is library windows. I I just want to be sure we're thinking about, as our former superintendent would say, needs that need to have versus nice to have. We can't predict what the master plan is going to tell us. I am very doubtful that building is there in ten years. I have some doubt that building is there in five or six years, but. We got to let that process play out. That's it.
Sequencing. Sequencing is very important. Okay, Tom.
Yeah, so so I wanted to, and I'm on to Pete's remarks and say that I I do totally understand the rationale here of isolating that part of the building and particularly when you. Look at that in isolation. I think there's a lot of merit to that. What I'm getting, wrap my head around is a broader context of. That this excluded part that has the current failure versus the part that has the potential failure. You know, the, I'm also not entirely clear on what the timeline is. I know we have to have the ARPA funds dedicated by. December twenty four and spent by December twenty six. But we're already a good way into our heating season by the time this thing starts. So like, you know, to me, the big risk is this fear of dislocated kids. In the winter, in a time where we don't have a good place to put them. And I'm not sure this project solves that fear. You know, you know, if if the thing were to blow up in January. I don't think, if my understanding of the timeline, that we have the problem solved and we don't have Parkers yet available. So if we're looking at something that's not going to happen until springtime, given Sir Nixon was saying about the master plan and where's this building going to be? You know, I guess. I guess at the end of the day. ARPA funds are restricted. We need to spend them at a certain time. There's other funding that we have that isn't restricted. Strikes me that spend all your restricted money. You know, now within its restriction, find something that's a clear go and free up the money that you would have spent from other sources. And use that on this once we have just a little bit more information. It strikes me might make some sense here. But that said, I get why I get the merits of doing this. I just, I want to make sure we address, you know, the. The squeaky wheel that people, I mean, arguably, we should relocate those kids who are sitting in forty and fifty degree classrooms, but we're not doing that right now. So I want to try to figure out how to. I make sure we fix that. We make sure we didn't throw too much money. It's a bad building that, as Mr. Nixon says, we don't know what its future will be.
Mike?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Karen. And it's nice to see everyone. Thanks for getting together to to talk about this. I wish we had the school committee. In for meeting several months back. My question is is more just around, I think, where. Chris and Tom were were kind of fretting, which is about the future of the building. There was a decision. A few years back now, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, to go to site site based after school care. And the Kids Borough program, you know, has been flourishing. I was not supportive of that decision then because of. Nostalgia for the WinRec program and Kids Corner and the Mystic Building. Maybe that was a little blind spot on my part. The decision was made despite my lobbying otherwise. And so I. I'm encouraged that the Kids Borough program has been such a success. I hear that from parents. All the time. It's not just convenience, but it's the programming. And so with Lynch opening a year from now, many of those kids that are at WinRec after school program are. Are Lynch kids and I assuming they're going to be, you know, in a Kids Borough program at Lynch once the building opens. So. I think that the numbers will diminish substantially there for our after school program and. I know that has been a concern for some of our staff in the building. When this decision was initially made and it's a big concern now as they see enrollment decreasing there, that they're going to lose their jobs. So. I am sympathetic to that. I would like to for us to explore. From a policy direction, how we protect the jobs of some of the folks that are there if Kids Borough ends up taking over. The majority of the enrollment for after school care, which I think is very likely over the next. Two to three years. And and also, you know, waiting for something until the master plan has been. Developed, maybe the Mystic Building piece can be prioritized like we've discussed before, but. I, you know, agree with the sentiment that I I don't think this building is going to be there used in this way in the next ten years, probably not next five. And if we just, if there's a a policy direction from the schools that say. We need this in the next, you know, however many years, then I I'm all for, you know, advocating for the the six million dollar solution, you know, whatever solves the problem, but. I think that there are efficiencies in the building, like moving some of those kids out of the cold spaces in the morning to the. The warmer spaces, right? The the younger kids are there until two and the older kids don't get there till three. I know there's a sense that they've been in these spaces for a number of years, but. I think the spaces are 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 somewhat fungible and, you know, kids in the morning can. Leave when other kids are coming in. It's pretty typical in a school facility. So. I I guess I'd like to hear from the schools. I mean, we we can put money towards any. Short term or long term solution. That's easy. I think I have faith in Weston Sampson's designs and their solutions. They've worked within. Really what's a kind of a, even though it's a lot for us, kind of a tight budget relative to the building, but. I I just, I I don't know what the the future of the building is and it seems like the. The tail is wagging the dog here a little bit. So I'm glad the school committee is here. You guys say this is the future of of. So I'm glad the school committee is here. You guys say this is the future of, 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 you know, childcare in Winchester. Then I'm with you. But if you don't, then, um, I, I would, I would rather us figure out other short-term solutions and put ARPA money towards, um, other very urgent projects. And also, as I say every meeting, you know, we are at zero risk of ARPA money disappearing. Um, we can, the select board can vote at any time before January to move that money into any bucket we want to, right? So it can even just be put into the operating budget, right, to offset operating costs. So we can put it towards any capital project. So I don't want our decisions to be driven by a non-factual fear that if we don't spend this ARPA money on this project now, we are going to lose it. That is not accurate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Uh, thank you, Karen. Um, I think we're getting a little off course with a lot of our discussion right now. Uh, my understanding coming into this meeting was, you know, the select board has had a lot of discussions with the town manager, with DPW, with Weston Sampson about what can be done at the Mystic School. Um, and there's a lot of options. There's a lot of different ways to approach it and there's a lot of details. And I am always impressed with Mr. Nixon's command of those details and the history behind them too. But where I think we are right now is the select board has a plan, a desire. And, and we have to make a vote as to whether or not we are going to try and solve at least, or at least try to solve one of the problems at the Mystic School. The problem of this aged piping covered in asbestos and all the risks that it is bringing. And, and I think, I know I support doing something along those lines. And we're going to have to vote whether or not we're going to put ARPA funds to that and we have to vote on that this coming Monday. What I understood this discussion today to really be focused on and what we were hoping to get from the school committee is if the select board wants to go down that path, if you're going to let the select board spend the ARPA money in its discretion to fix that asbestos piping and old piping and, and the lower level of the Mystic School heating system. Hopefully it also addresses the annex issues. But if the select board wants to do that, and if we vote to do that on Monday night, is the school committee going to be receptive and let us go forward with those plans at the Mystic School? I think that was the big question that we had more than anything else. And I appreciate all the discussion here that we're having about other potential options and everything else. But one thing I just really want to hear today is if that's the decision the select board makes, is the school committee going to allow us to move forward with it? And I, I think that's the answer we need to get today, yes or no. Because if the school committee, who is the current owner of that building, does not want the select board to do anything to it, does not want any, any plans put in place or any efforts put in place to fix the heating at any level whatsoever, then we're not going to put our money towards it. But if you're going to let us do that, then please let us know now so we can vote and start working appropriately so we can hit those deadlines.
I think that's what I was saying at the very beginning, that I was like, well, if we authorize it today, then select board still has the final decision. But, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, not, not to, not to be too cheeky, but I think the select board, we're trying to offer a gift horse to the school committee and the Mystic School. And if you guys want to let us go forward with it, please say so today so we can get that done on Monday. Um, and if you guys just don't want that to happen, please say so, so we don't waste our time and money.
And Thea?
Thank you, Karen. Thanks, everyone. Uh, I, I just kind of to, to join in what was, what Bill was saying, uh, you know, I think that is the, what we were kind of anticipating from previous conversations that the select board had had. There was a lot of agreement that, uh, the conditions at the Mystic School were pretty serious, that the plans while not, you know, what we anticipated at the outset and at the sort of secondary look at it. So we can't replace a full system or maybe we can, you know, take, take care of the very cold areas. You know, I think in having experts come in and identify, they're also seeing that, like, there are critical issues to fix with the steam piping, um, that sort of are, you know, maybe preferable, maybe causing some issues, but are, are critical to address. And given the work that, um, DPW and Pete and his team are doing, um, you know, we, as Beth said, like, just, there were some critical failures and things just started to get exacerbated and go downhill very quickly. Um, you know, my understanding from then the conversation that, that we had had, after, after the initial sort of design and look at it was, you know, this is not a long-term solution. It's certainly a five-year solution. It might be a ten-year solution. So, you know, it sounds like the school committee has not, there's not a master plan. The master, there's, there's not a decision on what's happening with the Mystic School. There's speculation that in ten years, it might be different. In five years, it might be different. But as far as I can tell, there's no plan for that. So we're saying we can create this solution that will cover us for, for five years, for maybe ten years for the, what potentially is the remaining life of the building and may turn out differently after the master plan. So I think like, while this is kind of a short, shorter term solution, it's, it's something that's going to, you know, extend the life and use of the building and the programs in this building and allow us also then to, you know, probably isolate further issues and eliminate, you know, DPW showing up at four in the morning, trying to get rooms above forty-five degrees and, and to get that going. So I think, you know, there's some things that were mentioned. Can we, you know, there's, there's solutions in emergencies that have been mentioned, but I think we also need to really think about, like, what is the, the next few years' plan? And, um, that's what the select board's been trying to do in terms of what are the next few years that we can use this building, allow WinRec to use it, Kids Corner, the after-school programs that are there, um, when there's nothing definitive changing in any of those space, in any of those sectors or spaces. Um, and I'll just apologize in advance. I do have a hard stop in Fort Knox, so I'll have to drop. Thanks.
Thanks for putting your input in though. Um, I'm going to jump to Tim.
Thanks, Karen. I really, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so I, so I'm going to start, I have a question and then a comment. I guess the question is, you know, there was this, um, concern that we had about catastrophic failure of systems in the building and how that might impact the program specifically this coming winter. Um, I think what I'm hearing today is that the, the actual timeline for, um, fixing these issues does not actually put us out of, um, the window of potentially having that happen this winter. Is that a, a correct reading of the conversation and timeline?
I think your, uh, your biggest risk as far as that goes right now is, is availability of transformers from the ability. Equipment we're looking at is pretty easy to get and could easily be done during the winter time. Of, of course, you're, you're dealing with kids and things like that too, so I'm not sure how that would pan out. But, um, the only thing that, that should be a long lead item that would be problematic, I think, would be the bad amount of transformer, which we actually do need. And, and I've heard, you know, thirty weeks for something like that. So even if you did the install, it would probably not be able to be energized until the transformer showed up. And those numbers are coming down, but, you know, it's, you just don't know what these buildings are going to have.
Is that April?
I.
I've got to count about thirty weeks.
I haven't done. I, I have a hard stop at, at, at two thirty as well.
So I think the intention was that if the board, uh, select board wanted to move forward to bid documents on Monday, we would immediately make contact with Eversource to start the conversation, um, to get that transformer ordered and, and do what we need to do. Um, but obviously, we're not going to do any of that until we know the project is moving forward. But yeah, I agree that the transformer is the, is the biggest piece that will drive the schedule. We can get, if we get the bid awarded, um, you know, in the November timeframe, and we can put a schedule together for the contractor. We've already, you know, talked to Nick about possibilities of way that, um, he and Kids Corner can work together to, to move kids around in the building if needed during construction. Um, I think that's all workable. It's just the transformer is the, is the biggest question mark.
But I, I guess just to, sorry to put a fine point on it, but just to be very clear, it's not likely that we are, if there is a catastrophic failure this winter, investing these funds now is not likely to get us to a position where we've avoided that for this winter. It'll be something for the, the following winter.
I would say your best case would be later in the winter, of maybe having something up in the morning. Like, you know, early spring would probably be a better way of putting it.
So I, I mean, my, my general comment is, you know, mindful of the fact that many of us have to actually drop off. I have a few minutes of wiggle room, but I, I, you know, I, I think what is merited here is a larger conversation around um, sort of where all this is headed, right? Because I've heard some, some, you know, musings both from the select board side and the school committee side about, you know, what they believe the prospects for this building are. Um, I think as someone with younger children and, and being friends with a lot of folks with younger children in Winchester, I know that the programs that are currently in, um, the building are ones that are really necessary. Um, in particular, you know, we've got, um, at least a, a, a situation where, you know, for folks who are working, having care until six P M. is, is really essential. Um, and so I think we, you know, are in a sort of weird position as a school committee, because there's one component of this. It's, you know, sort of school-based, um, after-care, um, which obviously we have some, um, oversight for, especially through the, the Kids Borough program and want to make sure that families have access to that, but there's also early care. Um, and I just, I, I guess it feels like, um, the, the concerns that I'm hearing, and I'm not speaking about my own perspective, but the concerns that I'm hearing are around whether it's wise, um, to invest this amount of money, um, at a time when there might be an uncertain future for the building. But at the same time, from my own perspective, I don't really know that we have a great solution for where those, those programs would go if they moved out of the Mystic Building. Um, and, and also I'm, you know, there, there's a point at which the school committee, we really need to ask ourselves, you know, about being in the business of, of essentially being a landlord for, for what are, you know, more or less town programs, things that benefit the, the greater population of the town, right? So, um, I, I, I personally, I mean, I'm never one to, to use Bill's words to look a gift horse in the mouth. But at the same time, I think, you know, what would behoove us all as, as a, as a, a set of boards is to, to have a larger conversation about, you know, sort of where we are right now. Um, I know that part of that is planned through the, the master plan, but in many ways, master plans are inputs of, um, you know, what the consensus and wishes of people are. Um, and then so it feels like that conversation needs to be had, um, in preparation for, for any master plan. Because right now we're a, you know, I, I would, I would say that the schools are a landlord in some ways to, to town resources, to town programs. Um, and, you know, this whole conversation is a really strange one in that we maintain, um, responsibility for the building. But the select board, you know, wants to invest money. And I think what I'm hearing, I, I may be off base, but I might be hearing from fellow committee members that we're not necessarily supportive of that. And that's, I, I just don't know where to go with that, especially, um, you know, given that people all have a hard stop. So, um, yeah, I'll, I'll stop talking and maybe others can help.
I'm going to jump to Michelle because she had jumped out a lot. Oh, but now she.
No, I, I was just, I, I mean, I promise I'll be real quick. I just wanted to say, um, to Bill and Anthea. I think what you're hearing is that it is a building that's in school committee control. And that we want to be good stewards of a building that is in our control, that is also in some ways a town use building also with the rec program in it. But that we also want to be mindful and planful of the current and future use of that building and solving the short-term needs that we've heard about heat and cold spaces. But also be mindful that, um, we know in town that our resources can also be very limited. So we want to make sure that we are able to solve short-term problems, but be good stewards of town resources and town programs, um, when we're thinking towards the future of Mystic. Because as the current owner of the building, um, we can't just think about nine hundred thousand dollars of ARPA in front of us and how are we going to spend it? We want to be more planful than that. So we're not denying any critical issues with the piping. I think you've heard Mr. Nixon and Mr. Hockoff, um, discuss those at length in great detail. I think they're very, um, well-versed on them and, and, um, good resources for us here at the committee. And, um, but I think you're also hearing from some of the other members that there's a larger policy discussion here around Mystic and the programs at Mystic, that before we invest a lot of town resources in the building, that's solving more of a long-term problem with heating there, that, um, we might want to have that conversation and that it might involve the master planning process because it brings more voices even than just, um, these two boards into play around, um, the future of that building. Is that a good summary for my folks so far?
That sounds like a good summary, Michelle. I just, I, I want to just acknowledge though, there's kind of two sides to this coin. One is kind of, so what's the future of the building? What might the master process tell us? What is it there ten years from now? And that's a conversation that it's easy for us to talk about conceptually. But to, to Bill and Anthea's points, I want to be very clear, and I maybe Mike mentioned this as well. Um, so I, I, I'm doubtful that building's going to be there in ten years. I'm not sure it's going to be there in six years. Here's what I also know. We need that building today. We need that building tomorrow. We will need that building next year. Mike Betancourt is right. We're going to have a new Lynch. We'll have a lot more space. But the hot news off the press for everybody is based on the leasing activity at River Street, we're going to exceed the enrollment impact for K-12 students coming out of River Street, based on who's already enrolled today and how, and the percentage of leased units they have. They're already forty-two percent leased up at Cambridge Street. We are watching this. And I think we just had, was it four, four kids just came in last week from River Street? So, you know, eyes are starting to pop out. I mean, we're building the housing and what happens? People come and they have kids. So you got to find a space for them. In the short term, so now for the next like two or three years, we're going to need the building. What I would say to Bill McGonigal, because you were the one who first brought it up, I think isolating nineteen twenty-three piping makes a whole lot of sense. Pete has been very clear that that is, that's the Achilles heel of this building's heating system. I think the approach Weston and Sampson has seems like a very sound one. And that this seems sort of fundamental to address this concern about the heating system just completely collapsing. Because if that were to happen in the next two or three years, we don't have space for these, these folks. And it's not just Kids Corner. It's, it's Kid Connection, it's, um, it's Fun School. I mean, it's, it's all the programming, right? So we need to do something. I would be supportive, Bill, of using ARPA money to address those things that DPW and Beth Rudolph feel are absolutely essential and critical to mitigate the system just failing completely. And I think that has been articulated as that nineteen twenty-three piping. You've, you've heard me harp on the issue of the wing. I mean, we're, so, so the information Scott just presented includes a two-story wing that wasn't built in nineteen twenty-three. I've just been asking the question, so why do we need to do that? Because that's, that, you're, you're putting money towards something that seems to be outside the scope of work. I think between isolating the piping, getting the windows in that we have approved, I think it will make it better. And better may be good enough for the next two or three years. But I, we are just where we are. I, I'm, I'm, I'm still a little surprised and I'm disappointed that I, I just don't think collectively our community understands we're not really addressing those chronically cold spaces yet. I'm thrilled, I'm glad to know Weston and Sampson will look at that. And there may be some simple things they can recommend to make it better. So I, I, I'm not opposed to the project. I, I just hope, for me personally, I hope somebody can go back and just take a second look, because I, I feel like throwing ARPA dollars at shutting off nineteen fifty steam piping, which doesn't seem to be a problem today, is money that could be better spent.
So Chris, you want to make a motion? So he gets, go with us?
We just have Tom left.
Yeah, we still got to hear from somebody else.
It can be really quick and then we can go to the motion. Uh, I, I, I mean, I have a kid there, so I, I do care a lot. Uh, I did hear Mr. Beckencourt talk about, you know, don't let ARPA be the, the tail that wags the dog here. And, and so I'll just put it out there and maybe we're past this. But, you know, if ARPA weren't looming at the end of a year deadline and we just had four extra months, would we get to the master plan information and would four months push that March, April, spring to July, August completion? Have this ready for the next year, school year? Um, that's, that's, I guess, sort of the common sense thing. I'm wondering, you know, if, if the tail's wagging the dog and we need to do the ARPA thing, we need to do the ARPA thing. But, um, you know, I, I, I generally support what Mr. Nixon says. You know, it, it makes a lot of sense to me to do the critical part. And if there's some added scope, throw that added scope to the, the part where everyone's complaining. Uh, but, but are we talking four months? And is ARPA really, you know, maybe ARPA is important as a deadline?
You know. Um, before Mr. Nixon makes a motion, um, I think September nineteenth, where the ninety percent document's going to be done. Can we not wait for those? Because I'm not even clear what. Can we not wait for those? Because I'm not even clear what's going to be done and what's not going to be done at this point. So I'm not actually not comfortable voting until after I see the documents on September nineteenth.
Mike, you had your hand up. Oh, you had went down. It went up and down.
Okay, thank, yep, thanks Karen. It, it's somebody can respond to Michelle, I guess.
Beth, can you answer the question?
Um, so we'll have, as, as Scott said, they'll have, um, ninety percent documents somewhere around the, the nineteenth. Obviously, we need to work to get everything together, packaged up to, to put the bid out, which is why I was requesting that the board. You know, give us the kind of go-no-go decision on the, on the ninth, so that we can work to get that done over the next month. Um, it's not just the documents, right? There's a whole front end and other, in other bidding requirements. We have to start advertising if we're trying to get it out on the street in early October, you know, and we're trying to get this done in a timeline that, um. You know, we know kind of where things stand by the time town meeting rolls around, so that if, if this project, you know, is significantly out of. You know, or we need fifty thousand dollars or we need whatever, that we might have a backup plan with a free cash article at town meeting. That's something the board has been discussing if it goes above, above the kind of, um, our allocation that we have. So.
When I guess that's my concern is that I don't know what project I'm, or cost I'm, I'm voting on right now. Because what if it does? And as we saw with the gym floor, it came in almost, uh, what is it, Mr. Nixon, a half million dollars higher?
No, actually, the base bid is one point seven. We funded it at one point five. Take the alternates out of it. We're a couple of hundred thousand dollars off, but we're working on that over the next few days.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the, you know, the point about, um, kind of feeling. Like we're on this schedule because of the ARPA funding, but it, you know, the board made a decision at the beginning of the year that we were going to try to move this project forward using ARPA funds. If we all say we're not going to use ARPA funds, then, then yes, we don't, you know, it gives us some timing at the end of the day. We still have to go to town meeting either in the fall or spring to restrict, request construction funding. So it doesn't solve the funding piece of the question, right? That we already have a long list of capital projects that will be, um, before town meeting. And this, this was not part of the, the projects that were ranked during the capital process. Um, I think, you know, the, the project is kind of what has been described by Scott. It's the heat pump, um, installation in the areas that we've talked about. It's the transformer installation. Pete can give a little bit more background. I don't think things are going to change significantly between today, what you heard from Scott. And the nineteenth, the scope of the project has been pretty consistent in general. They have committed as requested by the board to look at ways to improve heat delivery to those annexed classrooms. That's something that they're doing and that, um, as we all just heard from Scott, will not be part of. The base bid, but could certainly be done either as an addendum if there's actual construction work needed. Or it could be something that could be done through controls, uh, through contracts that Pete already has. Um, you know, there is annual maintenance and work that's done without side consultants to maintain that steam heat system. So it's, we're not exactly clear what that piece of the work entails. And that answer will not be, uh, available by the time the plans are, um, the ninety percent plans are done on the nineteenth.
Mike? And it is two forty-three. I'm just going to point out.
Thanks Karen. I'll be, I'll be quick. Um, but, uh, yeah, I, I would say that. You know, as a precautionary measure, I always advocate for putting a warrant article on for, um, any free app, free cash allocation for this project. If we do decide, you know, after the nineteenth to move forward with it, we put bid documents out. The market for these kinds of projects, um, as Michelle was, was indicating has been like really hard to pinpoint. So we, we will need some flexibility in having an article already in there that if we don't need it, we can pull it. But if we, um, strategically, uh, it makes sense to have it there. So. And, you know, when I mentioned the, the ARPA funding, what it would look like is. Us having a conversation with the capital planning committee saying, hey, we're running up against the deadline, um, for the ARPA spending. Let's, let's hold off on using money from the stabilization fund and use ARPA fund for a recommended project. And then if we, then we can use that money, um, later on if we need it. So my concern is that what I originally heard from Scott back, um, a few months ago was that. The timeline on transformers was eighteen months. I can say from my clients and my work experience that that is, um, that is a number that is realistic. Um, with not just getting the transformer, but installation. So, um, we, I know John Fallon had asked a year ago. If we don't get this done, what's the emergency solution? Are we moving kids to a school building? Are we moving them to the library? Are we moving to the McCall? So I don't think we've heard what that strategy is. It's not going to be. That we don't provide services to kids. That can't be the solution. So. I, I hope as we're, we're dealing with this and hopefully we get the bid documents on the nineteenth, um, that. That, that give us some direction. I, you know, I, I hope that we can come up with both things because this project will. It's very unlikely that it'll be able to protect these kids this winter.
So can I?
But I just, could I just clarify? Um, so Beth, are you saying that we could hold off until September nineteenth to make a decision? Um, pending the engineering report, give or take some of that.
I'm not sure there'll be, there'll be any more.
Those September twenty-third warrant closing.
So I'm not sure there'll be any more information in those ninety-five percent plans that would help. You all, I mean, those are very technical documents, right? I think that the scope of, has been described both today and in previous conversations. So I'm not sure, you know, those technical documents will help you guys make the kind of more policy level decision about moving this project forward or not. Um, you know, it, the, the project is intended focused mainly on that, uh, steam heat system. We are working separately on a parallel track to look at ways to improve heat delivery to those very cold classrooms.
Would it not give us a better sense of cost though then?
Um, unfortunately Scott's not here. I assume we're getting a call, updated cost estimate of the ninety percent, but, um, you know, I don't think it's. I, the best, the best indicator of cost is, is a set of bid document or an actual bid, right? So, um.
Right, but if we had the complete bid documents, we could get an estimate, a better estimate from, from the industry.
I don't, I don't, it's not going to be less than the nine hundred thousand. It may be a little bit more, I think, is, is.
Yes, my concern is the other end, that it's going to be a lot.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully we're not that far out of range, given that, you know, their estimate, original estimate was, you know, in the May timeframe. Um, so hopefully we're not that out of range and now we're double the cost of, I, I can't imagine we're in that. Obviously that is a question for Scott to answer.
So if it ends up being more than the nine hundred thousand. The roughly the nine hundred thousand dollar mark, then what happens?
So the board has a little bit of additional. The, the board has a little bit of additional ARPA money that has not been allocated to any project that we've been kind of holding aside. We're also going to do some closeouts over the next, you know, um, month or so, and we'll have a little bit more money coming back to us. So there's, there's a little, a little pool of money that has not kind of been earmarked in any way. And then as I mentioned, uh, the board will have a conversation on Monday night about whether we want to put a article on to fall town meeting. Kind of as a placeholder, um, for a free, uh, free cash allocation, assuming we go for this project to supplement funding if needed. And we can always pull it if it, if we don't need. And so if that's the case, this project needs to be bid in a timeline by which we have a known. You know, low bid estimate, so that we have a final number to take to town meeting. So that is the other piece of what we're juggling here.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, I'm happy to make a motion just because we, I feel like I need to, to kind of wrap this up, not knowing yet which way this is going to fall. My two closing remarks are going to be, we spent, I think, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars re-roofing a wing of Winchester High School. You know, even though we already knew we'd be either tearing the building down or gutting it. I mean, we had, people were catching water with buckets in the high school. And so it had to be re-roofed. And then we got three point seven million dollars from town meeting with Mike Betancourt's help. Uh, for the Morocco Life Extension Plan. We said we want to put three point seven million dollars into this school. And we're going to be replacing it between twenty twenty-eight and twenty thirty. So, I mean, it is okay to me to be spending some money. To sustain an important facility in town. And that's why I'm supportive of this, but I do, I do have concern about that. I'll call it scope creep, but with lowercase. So I'll make a motion. I move that the school committee not approve, but support, because it's ARPA money after all. I move that we support the select board's use of ARPA funds towards completion of bid documents and construction. For the isolation of nineteen twenty-three steam piping at the Mystic School. And replacement with a V R F split system as presented.
Mr. Nixon, I would be more supportive of that if you took use of ARPA funding out. I think it's up to the select board how they fund this project.
So I, that's why I didn't say approve. I just said support.
Right, even support. I really think it's up to them. It's not our, it's not our policy direction to tell them how to spend the ARPA.
So, so we're not. I mean, I, it's been pitched to us that they want to use ARPA for this. I just feel it's like town meeting, right? Any project needs a funding source. So we're having this conversation in the context of ARPA. Cause honestly, I'm not sure how I think about this, Michelle, if it's free cash. If the board said, oh, we want to spend nine hundred thousand in free cash on this building, I might say, well, now wait a minute, but, let's have a little more conversation.
Well, then, then perhaps the motion should say pending a total project cost and funding source. Cause they have not yet voted on any of that. It seems a little premature.
Well, how about this? I made a motion. It hasn't been seconded yet. You could amend it. Um, you could second the motion and then.
I think I was just trying to.
You, you can, just because.
I was trying to get there.
My, my wife was in the emergency room yesterday for hours and I got four hours of sleep. So if you want to second my motion and then you can make an amendment, Michelle, we can do it that way too.
Okay, let's assume I already did that. Seconded, but amended to remove the ARPA and say pending total project cost and funding source. We're supportive of it, but not one until they identify those things.
Sure, I'm okay with that because it doesn't exclude ARPA as a funding source. That's.
Yeah, it doesn't.
That's fine. That's fine. I'm okay with that.
So that was our second.
So the only question I would have is that, Chris, your motion specifically referenced the nineteen twenties, um, piping. As we know, Weston Sampson is looking at ways to improve the heat in the kind of others, other portions of the building. So.
Yeah, but, but, but there's no, there's no scope there. I mean, he hasn't, they, they won't even have a chance to look at it until the winter in the heating season. I think it's great. They're going to do that. Maybe we have a conversation after they get in there and they look at it. And, and we can have a conver, there's just nothing to talk about right now, just because they haven't done that work.
Sure, but I think the concept is that you would support that work, right? So.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I would not, I would not make that a part of my motion, but I certainly support it. And I think, I think clearly there's consensus of the school committee. We would support any investigation and, and, and any opportunity to improve those chronically cold spaces back there. Because I think that's kind of what we thought originally we were going to be doing.
And also the point that was being made earlier was that the nineteen fifties portion of the building did not necessarily need to be. Um, a part of this project. It was focused on the nineteen twenties portion of the lower part of the building. That has been, has had the, the leaky, the leaky steam pipes. At least that was my understanding.
Well, there's, there's the, the nineteen twenty-three piping is leaking, whether it's on the second floor or the first floor, Karen, it doesn't really matter. It's just old and it needs.
Leaky piping.
Yeah, yeah.
But I wanted to understand your motion, that I think this is the point, um, Ms. Rudolph and Ms. Moloney's here making. Um, sounded like it excluded the main street facing nineteen fifties wing that you, you showed us the picture, uh, not, not the back area. Like, does your motion include that, that area? It, you know, right when you go in the front door on the left?
Nope. If you read the very, the introduction of Weston and Sampson's report, their design, their design goal was to isolate the nineteen twenty-three piping. So. Because there's nobody articulated why we need to isolate and why do we need to replace nineteen fifty steam piping with a V R F system? I'm not going to support that. I am a hundred percent behind isolating nineteen twenty-three piping. And maybe what that will do is that will reduce the scope a little bit and there'll be some money left over that can go towards those chronically cold.
And Pete Lawson has his hand up and.
I was gonna say, Mr. Hopcroft, this is why I was asking for ninety percent bid document, that the bid documents before we voted on anything.
So can I just, I, I, I'm, I'm concerned with doing a vote that restricts any of the area that's already in the scope. Cause as Scott said before he left, he's got to look harder into it if. The delivery of the steam to that addition is based on those hundred and one-year-old pipes at this point. So I, I'm in agreement. Maybe there could be an assessment and that could be isolated out and, and not in the docks. And but I wouldn't want that restricted. We could maybe have another conversation later after we do get it. But if, again, sorry to, if, if you're going to vote to have the project move forward. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't pigeonhole that area only because I'm concerned about how the, how that gets its steam to start.
But so Pete, my only response to that is if there is some feeder that's a hundred and one years old, that obviously gets replaced. But there is no nineteen twenty-three steam piping in that wing. Because that wing did not exist in nineteen twenty-three. And it's not the basis of his design. And, and this is not the first time we've asked Scott about this. We talked about, we, we, we sent him an email and even some pictures like the third week of June and said, why, why is this in there? And he said, well, I'm, I, I'll have to go back and look at that. I thought maybe that was part of the original building. And I, I feel like he was sort of saying that again today. So it's not the first time he's heard that. So I, Pete, I'm with you that I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm surprised the piping has lasted as long as it has. I know it's becoming increasingly a pain in the butt for you guys. Um, I, I'll fight for this, you know, seven days a week. I think we should just, just bail on the nineteen twenty-three piping. And that alone is a good chunk of work and it's going to cost some money. And I think it'll make a huge difference in the building. I support that.
So I'm, I'm supportive of that as well, um, although I'm mindful that, that, that nineteen fifties piping might have tapped into that earlier piping. And since we're taking it, making it all together and putting in electric systems, um, they won't. They'd have to reroute a pipe from the boiler room, which I heard you say is adjacent to that area. So maybe that's not a big deal, but it's a different. It's a different scope. Uh, it may be a lesser scope, um, to just reconnect that wing. But you might be cutting off the way by doing that.
And then don't say that it's part of the project as it stands at this point.
To Michelle Bergstrom's earlier point, we're talking about a wing of the building that typically has windows cracked open in February because it's so warm. So that we don't have a problem with a lack of heat here. If, if, if we should just be clear-minded, if what we're trying to do is what's absolutely necessary, so that we're getting heat into the building. I'm just not there, Pete. I don't, I don't, nobody has actually presented an argument to me why we need to be. Putting in a new heating system in that end of the, of the building.
I don't think it's just the amount of heat that's being delivered, right? It's the quality of the piping. So even though it might be producing a very warm environment, the pipe is failing and it's causing leaks. And D P W is having to go in there and under emergency situations do asbestos abatement. And I, and I don't know enough about the configuration of the connection from the nineteen twenties piping to the nineteen fifties piping. Nineteen fifty's piping isn't exactly new either. So I don't know enough to say that we can restrict. The funding to just the nineteen twenties portion of the building. I, I think we have to rely on, uh, to some extent on our designers. To understand the way the system is put together and, you know, rely on their expertise, expertise to be able to make this a project that will function for everybody. Understanding we're not trying to over-design or put too much money in, into this because we know the building. Five, ten, however many years might not be there or might be in a different use. But I, I think we just need a little bit of flexibility, um, to be able to make those decisions as we go forward over the next few weeks.
I just think those decisions. Right, I was just going to say Karen, I think those decisions could be vastly different in cost and outcome. Uh, Mr. Nixon, what, what would you need to see from Weston and Sampson? To be comfortable going beyond the nineteen twenties? Are you just not at all?
Well, I guess I, I'd like, uh, we, we sent questions in writing.
Yep.
I think the third week of June and said, this wing was not built in nineteen twenty-three. Why is this in the scope? And we didn't get, yeah, I, we saw no written answers back from Weston and Sampson. And so even today in the call, you know, I, I think what Scott was saying is, you know, wow, you know, you could have fooled me. I mean, it really, you stand on the street, it looks like it was built at the same time. They did a masterful job. So I, I hope folks can appreciate why. So I, I hope folks can appreciate why I feel I need to be a little more convinced that this is necessary. Uh, all indications to me going back to June were that the Weston and Sampson team took that approach. Because they were under the assumption or presumption that was all built in nineteen twenty-three. And the concept of isolating pip, piping metal makes a lot of sense.
A, a lot of that, that, from us was to do the biggest bang for the buck with the money we had. It wasn't that it, it was entirely that we're just going for the twenty nineteen twenty stuff. We were trying to maximize the amount of money. We, I'm very much part of setting up the scope. And I agree, if it's functionally something that we can remove, but that wasn't the direction they were given. And they set up a core area within the budget that we gave them to take it off the old steam and deliver consistent heat. So I, I mean, it can come back more to me on what that scope was, but we were working with the doll, within the dollar amount. If the goal right now is to reduce it below the amount that we've talked about. Certainly can work with them to try and, and cut that down, but that's, you know, that has to be decided. I'm, and I'm not getting into it too much more, but decision's up to you folks. I just, that was where that was going. And if we're going to keep it another five, ten years, why not do that now while we have the money? But that's a political decision for you folks.
So, so, so folks, I'm, I'm really sorry, but I'm already thirty-one minutes past my hard stop. Um, and I don't.
I'm coming up fast on one.
I, 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 but I, I'm going to need to switch devices. I mean, are we actually going to take a vote, school committee? Because I just, we've been sort of going around in circles and I understand why, but it's, I, I, I just can't unfortunately spare any more time. If we're going to take a vote, I'd like to be on record for that, but.
I, can I, I think, I think we should move forward with the vote. All, all, the only thing I, I, I will add, and I'm on a time stop too, um, I, I'm bringing up, this is the design basis. This is the first page of the report that was shared with the school committee in June. Okay, so it.
And that's where I'm going to be able to read it.
Design, design basis, the scope of work for this project is limited to modifications of the existing heating system in the original nineteen thirties vintage portion of the building. Period. So I, I supported that in June. I support it today. And I think Weston and Sampson has to come back and tell us why they think it needs to be expanded. But I understand, you know, from Pete, he's, if, if part of the message was, well, let's get bigger bang for the buck, that's a different, that's a different thing. But that's not what was in the report from Weston and Sampson. So I'll, I'm going to let my motion sit. I, I support isolating the original piping because I think it'll make a big difference.
I have three minutes.
I'll also make a really quick, uh, yeah, I just want to make a really quick point, that, what I heard, um, Mr. Lawson say, and I think I've heard, uh, others say before is that. We had nine hundred thousand dollars to spend. So, so Chris, I don't think it's like, that's the nineteen twenties section. It's like, okay, that's our problem. That's what we're going to do, but we have a little bit more budget here. So they took on this, this extra space. Maybe they thought it was nineteen twenties, maybe not. And so for that reason, I do support what you're saying, because if we can isolate that, those eight, uh, mini splits. That might free up enough budget to put, for, for many splits in the other area. Uh, so I'm certainly on board with what you're saying. Um, I just don't know how.
Particularly because that, particularly because, Tom, the June report, if you read to the bottom of the report, their estimate at the conceptual stage was actually over budget.
Right.
It was not nine hundred. It was more than nine hundred.
It was more than nine hundred and it was only on the older portion.
So, so why don't we take this vote? Now we can figure out if there's additional. Stuff to, to do after, because we're, I think we're going to lose people right now.
So I made a motion, I made a motion to amend, just for, uh, just taking out the, the funding source.
The, the specificity about ARPA.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine. I support that. So we have a motion and an amendment.
Motion and we have a second. So Tim?
Sorry, we're voting. I vote aye.
Okay, um, Michelle?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So the vote is unanimous. So John, does that give you what you need?
Yes.
On behalf of Michelle.
Yes. Because some directions.
Would you guys be able to just, um, have Aaron or somebody send us that motion with the?
Yes, I will ask Chris to write that out.
Thank you.
So we can include that. Michelle can put your heads together and write that all out.
And, and fingers crossed, fingers crossed that they tap that, that wing directly into the boiler room and it doesn't go through this area. Um, in which case it should be an easy thing. Big fingers.
Yep.
I have to bail.
Fingers cross that windows brand comes through.
Okay, thank you guys for, for leaving.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Um, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
I just did.
Second.
Want to make more merger?
Uh, Tom?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
I don't see Chris. Michelle?
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned.
Bye, select board.
Bye, thank you.
They have to make a motion to adjourn too, but I think they already did.
I think they left. That's on the.
I'll keep it open. Oh, you know what?
I, I, I moved, I moved to adjourn this meeting of the select board.
Mike still there? Mike want on?
You have a quorum.
Second, second, second.
Good thing, good thing you kept our Zoom account for the rest of the week.
Bye, guys.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.